Select Board. We're going to begin the meeting in open session with call to order, pledge of allegiance, homeless, silent, and public service announcements. Then we will move to the DPW Department Report, then the Water and Sewer Department Report, then we will move to the Town Administrator Update, and then we will consider a possible action to approve the driveway permit fees increase, consideration of possible action to approve the cemetery services fee increase, consideration of possible action on acceptance of the proposed cemetery policy, consideration of possible action to authorize the Chair to sign the proposal for professional engineering services NPDES Phase II Stormwater Project FY25, Stormwater Assistance with tie-in bond in the amount of $93,300 to be completed no later than June 30th, 2025. Then consideration of possible action to discuss and approve contract with tie-in bond for above-ground storage tank replacement design services for $64,000 paid for FY25 Capital Improvement Plan. Consideration of possible action to discuss and approve contract with tie-in bond for contract administration and oversight for the Route 20 sewer mainlining project paid from FY24 Article 41 for $59,000. And then on to Action Item G, consideration of possible action to approve a grant of trail easement for Old Servage Village, the town, for land on Stallion Hill Road. Then consideration of possible action on consolidation of facilities manager and IT Director positions into Director of IT and Facilities as approved by the Personnel Committee as a Grade 8. And then consideration of possible action of appointing Jeremy Jalbert as Facilities Manager and IT Director position with an annual salary of $115,000 per year. Then consideration of possible action on creating an IT Technician Position as approved by the Personnel Committee. Consideration of possible action to opt out of early voting or vote by mail for a local election. Then on to consideration of possible action on the hiring of Gregor McGregor as Special Counsel and to authorize the Town Administrator to sign a letter of engagement. Then consideration of possible action on the resignation of part-time dispatcher Megan Kazivan effective February 28th, 2025. And then consideration of possible action on the acceptance of a donation of $25 from the Donald and Edith Ann Heard, from Donald Needeth Ann Heard, excuse me. And then consideration of possible action to open the annual town meeting warrant for town meeting to be held on April 28th, 2025 at 7:00 PM at Tantasco Regional High School. And then consideration of possible action to open the special town meeting warrant to be held upon the completion of the annual town meeting. Then old business, new business, correspondence, and then approval of minutes, Citizens Forum, Executive Session, and then adjournment. With that, can everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then, just take a moment of silence. And tonight, I just would like to think about, as there's a lot of tension and back and forth in the world, just our people in uniform who are serving abroad and at home. And as we, you know, all the politics goes around, we have to realize that, you know, every day these people are putting their lives on the line, and we just all have to move very deliberately. So would that please just take a moment of silence? Thank you. And we just pray for all their safety. Public Service Announcements. 2025 nomination papers are available for the following boards and positions. One for Constable, one position for three years. And then we have two zoning board of appeals position open for three years. I'm assuming we're looking for people to take out papers for those positions, so if anybody knows, anybody who needs to serve or wants to serve, excuse me, please let them know. With that, Mary Blanchard, any public service announcement?
No.
Mary, don't?
Um, no.
Chase?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Nothing for me? Great. All right, Department Reports. DPW, come on down.
Let's say the senior center, but is that open to everybody?
Okay, Shane, you can go first.
Is the open house for the senior center for everybody?
Yeah, so it's tentatively March 1st, but we'll update. There may be a slight delay on that.
Good evening.
Hey Shane, how's it going?
It's going. You have the reports for December, Operation Report. You don't have one for January. Our server was down last week, and I should be able to submit by the end of this week. There was really nothing any different than any other month. But if you have any questions on December, I'll start with those.
Any questions on December?
No.
All right. No questions on December.
Okay, moving on. So the last time I was in front of you, we talked about PFOS and drinking water and how we hadn't seen any hits. Well, two weeks later, that changed. So we had a hit on one of the wells well under the limit, and the way our system works, when it blends and goes through, the treatment plant was still on compliance. So I spoke to DEP length about it. One of the things contributing to that is we're in a drought, and when you're in a drought, walk-in handouts end up in the drinking water. It's that simple. We saw it when we went through the chlorate issue, and now we're seeing it now. So it doesn't trigger anything. We'll continue monitoring according to their schedule, and as we get more results, I'll report it back to you. All right? They moved the job trailer on to Water Works today to start the filter rehab job, so we can change out all the media, fix the leaks on the filter. And when that job's complete, then we should come, we'll be able to come back to you and tell you how much longer you have on that plant. Even if they come back and say those filters are good for another 20 years, you're going to have to do some kind of upgrade, because the electrical, it's 43 years old, right? And it's outdated. So we'll go through this, we'll see what happens, we'll get it back up and running, and then we'll come back before you again. Okay? We're in the middle of Cleaning Well 3, typical maintenance, everything looks normal. Down at the wastewater plant, last week, we emptied PTU unit, what we call Tank 2. We brought in Tyne Bond, constructional engineer. They looked everything over. We have to recoat that tank. We've already done one. It's on a three-gear plan. So they've looked at it. They'll put together spec, and that'll go up to bid, and we'll recoat that, that tank too. So I'm going to say this over and over again, the magnetite that we use does some great things, right? In high flows, it's awesome. But it's also very viscous, and it eats everything, coatings, pumps. So it's just, this is what we bought, this is what we're stuck with, and this is what we're going to have to, we're just going to have to deal with it. Okay? And then the other thing we did is, if I don't know if you remember, we were having CBOD issues. We've been working really close with the Oleus Technical Group to get our sludge age down. We've done that. Today, we completely took the COMAC system online and cleaned that out. That's the first time we've done that in 12 years. So hopefully, when starting fresh, we won't have those CBOD issues in the future. And besides that, just a lot of maintenance, trying to stay indoors and trying to stay warm.
How are the wells after the rain the other night?
So you're not going to, when the ground's just frozen, it's not going to penetrate right away, right? So we do check them every day. Like I said, I've seen them lower, but, and I know Heather doesn't want to hear this, the more rain, the more snow, the better for the water department.
Yeah. No, it makes sense. So basically, we're just waiting for the hard cold to drop.
Yeah, I don't even think that we have enough out there now. I think we're, if we don't get some, a lot more rain, a lot more snow, we're probably going to open up the spring in a drought and probably a water ban.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. Questions, any other questions for Shane?
Well, we have a water ban every year. I can't remember the last time we haven't.
It goes off the stream limit, so when the stream gets to a certain level, you have to go into it. That's a DEP, that's part of your withdrawal permit. Usually in the spring, you don't start in it. But right now, we're still in a drought in the middle of winter. It's not very common.
I'm okay with the water ban unless, unless rain, no, I'm sorry. I said that on the air. I know we need it.
It's fine. I'm just, from an operator's standpoint, and it's a catch-22, right? You get rain, it's great for the water department, it's not good for the sewer department, so...
And the snow, if it evaporates before it melts, you lose a lot of that in the air, as opposed to when you have a soft ground and you don't have an ice coating under it, and that snow melts into the ground. This, this snow's evaporating up.
And if it all melts at once, and then becomes a problem for some of the pump stations, they can't keep up. The good thing is, I just told you how great your magnetite is on high flows. That plant runs like a champ. The higher the flows, the better. Most operators are up at night. I'm in bed sleeping like a baby, knowing it's not, it's going to purr.
Okay, so, but basically, we're in a state of drought, and, all right, well, just keep us in the loop on it, please.
Yeah, I'll give you an update when I come before you again next.
Yeah. Any other questions for Shane?
No, just on repairs, Shane, could we get a list of what needs repairing now and what you foresee in the near future?
So we're actually in the middle of a program right now with Tyne Bond, an asset management program. I think we have a meeting this week on it. We've done the initial first step. Now we'll go through, and we'll look at each piece of equipment and fill out a form. And by the end of this year, there'll be a complete list of all the assets there, what condition they're in, and when they're going to need to be replaced.
Yeah, because it's nice to see. We don't want to be slammed with $600,000.
No, but, no, but you should go back and look at some of the reports I gave you. I gave you some construction estimates of $20 million that you're going to need in the near future for water and sewer. So, but this asset management's required by Mast DEP, it's in your new permit. I think it's a really good thing. You're doing it with some grant money, which is great. And at the end of it, you're going to look at every asset you have and put a timeline on how long before you'd have to replace it or repair it.
Yeah, no, and it, but, and I guess this is more for Robin than for Shane, but, and again, the larger kind of cap, capital project, we've been circulating it around for a while, and it's been a minute since we sort of had a articulation to us, you know, because again, you know, sometimes, you know, it comes up a lot with Shane, because of the nature of water and sewer, I guess. But again, that kind of started shortly before you came aboard, Robin, of just, you know, let's get the capital process to a point of, you know, a deliverable, so we can make some actual assessments, because I suspect that, you know, I don't know, you know, I think the next year might be tough on cash, so...
Yes, it's going to be very tough.
And that asset management is both. It's anything above ground, water, wastewater, storage tanks, boost the station, so it takes a full look at all your assets and gives you a timeline on when you're going to have to either repair or replace.
And from the town side, we will take a look at whether debt that we have in debt service falls off for, let's say, the renovations of these buildings, and really where, asset-wise, we need to go next.
Yeah, because we have a lot.
No, but it's, it's nice to see it.
Yes.
Well, because there's, and also, I think you're right, Mary, because there's sort of a, I don't want to say like macro and micro, but there's sort of like the, you know, the big projects are kind of easier to see, but, you know, the death by a thousand cuts projects, you know, where you want to be able to kind of assess it. So yeah, that'd be helpful. Anything else for Shane?
No.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thanks, Shane, you too. Stay warm.
Yeah, stay warm. All right. Heather, you are up. How's it going, Heather?
Good evening.
Just want to thank Heather for a 36-hour, 42-hour operation this weekend, so, her team.
Yeah, so I guess I want to start, and it's not really for you guys, for anybody watching at home, please know that we are making every effort to get all the ice off the road, and it will be a constant effort for the next couple days, because as much, salt only does so much on ice. Ice, once it's formed on roads, is very hard to remove. And yes, we were out there trying very hard to treat the roads. We were in all day on Monday. I had four guys in doing dirt, two of them on dirt roads, just concentrating on those, because they do get left to the end, and two doing our other roads. So we've, I had some notes on it. We've had over 450 hours of overtime just in the last two weeks, and that doesn't even include Monday. And so, and that was with, that's, we have 10 guys right now. That doesn't, I don't have overtime, so that's not even my overtime. I probably had over 40 hours in the last two weeks. I was sick this whole storm. Not that that matters, I was here. I had to, I had to be here and do.
It matters. Sounded terrible, I can attest to that.
And I literally didn't have a night that I wasn't woken up out of a sleep. So I think people just need to understand, we are a small crew. I had only seven on the crew, as opposed to 10, because I had three guys that were out with the flu and couldn't come in. So we really are battling it. We are smaller in numbers with our contractors this year, but, so we're doing the best we can. And we were in really good shape until it decided to rain, flood, and then flash freeze. So...
Oh, that's pretty untenable.
Are you still looking for plow drivers? The last time you were in, you were looking for.
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah. We didn't get anybody.
Oh, you didn't from the time you came?
We're encouraging people, if they can drive...
If there's people that are interested in driving our trucks, we still have, we still have spots to drive. They can drive our trucks if they don't have plow trucks. I'm hopeful that we're maybe coming through that and going to spring, but, so you'll see on my reports that I had listed those days, I can tell you that in the last two weeks in February, it was, we were in on the 3rd, the 6th, the 13th, no, 3rd, 6th, 9th, 13th, 15th, and 16th, and 17th. So we have been really hammered with not huge snowstorms. I'm almost to the point where I just would rather a huge snowstorm, and not an ice storm, and not a prolonged snowstorm where we don't get very much, but we have to be here because it's spitting and doing all of this.
What I would like to say for the public listening is, this particular storm is the single, I think, single worst type of storm you can have, when you have a deep freeze right after the snow. If she doesn't clear the snow, people are all over the place. If she clears the snow and the ice forms in puddles, then it's just glare ice. So it's very hard. I do encourage people, I do post updates from Heather on my Facebook page. This is what the snow operation plan is. Let people know the times we're bringing people in, just so people have a sense of when roads might be clear, might not be clear. It's not whether or not people should drive, that's their individual choice, but it's just to keep people updated. But this particular storm, the turnover, and we knew the freeze was coming, but so much snow had already started blocking up storm drains and everything else, that this particular type of storm, just in my experience, even working with a number of DPW directors, this is always what we hear, is this is the single worst type of storm. People have emailed me if this street, they think this street's been forgotten or concerned, they can message me or email me. We work with Heather to get somebody out if there's a problem.
Yeah, we'll have people out again tomorrow, and things are refreezing. It's melting and refreezing, and melting and refreezing. I will say, I believe that, you know, I'm going to be quite frank, we concentrate on the major roads first. You know, obviously, we're not responsible for 20 and 131, but Holland Road, Brookfield Road, Fisk Hill, you know, we have to do the major roads that everybody lives off of first, and now we're going after those side streets, and we will continue to do that. I will tell you this, yesterday, we ran out of salt. We had barely any left in the salt shod. So it's not that we're not out there treating the roads, we really are trying to treat the roads. We are mixing, and because of the ice, we are some, putting sand down in some places with the mix, because we need some grit, and there's, because they're that icy. It's not normal operations, that isn't what we normally do. But when you get ice pack like this, we don't really have a choice, plus of the shortage of salt. We do expect more salt coming in, but honestly, yesterday, the cupboard went bare. It was done. And it's not, it was 100% full when we started in the storm. That's how much salt we used, which is a lot.
Yeah. Well, any questions?
I don't have questions. I don't want to pile on, but I also, so I know you told people that to call you if their roads were, or text you if their roads were done.
They can message me.
I just had a few, and you already know this, but people are emailing me about 131 sidewalk.
So let me, let me tell you that.
I just wanted to put, add that to your...
And I would like to, I, so let me just talk for another minute about sidewalks and what we're doing.
That would be helpful.
We don't do sidewalks unless it's on regular time, just because we are already done too much overtime, especially this week. We didn't have any staff to do it on Monday, so we started today. We got about as far as shaws, because that snow is so hard and so iced over, that it's taking tremendous effort. So we will be doing again tomorrow, and it's still not getting it, there's still ice on the sidewalks. But we are, we'll keep going. If we can go over them again with the other machine, maybe we can get some more up, maybe some of it will loosen up a little that we've been over it, but it is...
It was struggling today, watching the machine, I watched the machine go off the sidewalk.
The machine is struggling to be able to do the sidewalks. It took him eight hours in the machine to get to shaws. So we are, we're out there, we're trying. The other machine, which we send south on Route 20, wouldn't even go through it. So we will head that way with the bigger machine when we can, once we're done 131, but it's going to be a couple days, and it's, it's a frozen block of ice, so it's very, very difficult. And we don't have any other equipment that's going to be able to fit on the sidewalk, so we're limited in the number of pieces of equipment we have. I will also say, we had both small sanders go down yesterday when we were treating roads. We have another sander that got hit in an accident, because somebody reended us.
Sounds like a sad song.
You know, it's, it's like, we're kind of overwhelmed, but, you know, we're going to make it, we're going to make it, we're going to make it through. People just have to be patient. It's not going to be instant.
Well, that's part of the equation, patience with...
And so I would, yeah.
My road's not done.
Yeah, I mean bluntly, when you have...
Well, it's still snowing.
Yeah, but it goes back to the earlier point, which is, you know, I'm sure there's all sorts of lessons we can learn about what we could do more effectively or not effectively as we get into this type of storm, but has, this is probably the type of storm we're living with going forward. And when you have a, I mean, it was like, they're 40 degrees and raining about, it seemed like three to five inches of rain on, I guess that was Sunday night?
Yeah.
And thawed everything, and then you have sitting water going into a freeze, so there's only so much you can do. But I guess the only...
When you read some of the stories about people, their ties actually getting frozen...
Frozen to the ground, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, but so I guess the only thing I'd ask is that, as we go into next year with this, knowing that these are the types of storms we're living with now, because this is just the type of storm we're living with now, we are going to unfortunate, you know, oddly, I don't even think Maine got a lot of snow through the last three weeks. We were the northern point of this storm. So when we get hit with these sort of bodies through, off the mid, the middle of the country in the south, we're going to get these extreme swings in a way that we used to only get when it was like April, you know, 30 years ago. So we just have to, to next year, let's assume this is what it's going to look like, because I think it's going to be what it's going to look like.
And I think, you know, I wish, you know, when you've already had staff in for 20 hours, there's only so much more you can ask them to do. So, I mean, they were in, trying to unplug drains and do that, and we knew the flash freeze was coming. And if, and in ideal situation, if we had more staff so that we could have been treating at the same time, we, we might have been in better shape.
And there's a safety issue at some point, when people have worked 20 hours to put them in a 10-wheel sander, I can't do it.
100%. I agree with that, and, and I'm not trying to pile it on, but we have had three mild winters. And we're getting hit the last three weeks, and we can't throw our hands up and say we're too tired to work.
Yeah. And it's, and some of it goes to budgeting, planning, and things like salt. It's just, it's, I'm not really being critical of anybody, but it is, it's kind of what it is. It's like, yeah, we're going to get thaws and water. It's like, so we just have to figure it out. And there is, and if this comes to, I don't know, this, this isn't a next week problem.
Do DPWs ever hire just seasonal employees?
So we, we...
Like, I don't think we ever have, but I don't know.
Well, no, I'm not even talking about plow drivers, I'm talking about, you know, eight-hour-a-day seasonal employees, like some people hire for the summer, or...
Yeah. So we do that for the summer, and we have had them, so I have a seasonal line item in the budget, so we do hire seasonal employees in the summer.
Okay.
And in general, in some cases, when we've still had money, like we'll hold them on just because obviously they can be, you know, they're a less expensive worker for me, and if I have the funds, I'm going to use them. But in the winter, sometimes what you find is if you had a seasonal employee, there, there's not a lot to do sometimes. You're all, you know, during a storm, there's a lot to do, there's a lot to do right now. But if you just had a cold winter, there's not a lot to do. So you have to weigh that, so, which we did get some, I had a seasonal employee up until Christmas time, until he went back to college. And, you know, we did get some stuff done that we weren't getting done enough, as we had walls painted, we had things, different paint, you know, did some sprucing up work, organized some different things, and it was great to have him to kind of do some of that lower manual labor. And he did plow for us for a couple storms, and he did help out there. But it's also finding that person that's willing to do it.
Because with that amount of overtime, it's a huge amount of overtime.
It would have helped with three guys down. The other thing is that the seasonal, this money all comes out of the snow ice budget, which we can kind of borrow against, so we don't go into a budget deficit, really. If we're hired just for snow ice, and they have a premium overtime rate, which is part of their agreement, so we didn't give a lot of wage adjustments for DPW, but what we said is, if they did overtime, they got a snow premium for overtime. In the bad winters, the mild winters, they don't make out on that. This winter, they make out on that. It ends up being a balance. But it's easier, because we don't have to put a budget line item and anticipate how much we would use them, because you borrow against it going forward. So if you put a seasonal line item in, you're eating up a budget line item of money that you may need or may not need, depending on the winter. Whereas if you keep it just, you hire them as needed for snow removal, out of the snow and ice overtime budget, or snow and ice budget, then you can, you don't worry if you run a deficit line item. I don't have to puff a line item up in the event we bring the seasonal in, and then fine, we brought them in and didn't need them. So that's why the hiring of drivers is really the best way. It gets to the concept that you're getting at, it's, but what we need is drivers. That's really, we were down three guys with the flu. If we had had three extra drivers, we would have at least been full capacity and, you know, been in better shape.
No, I get it. I mean, I feel sorry for how hard they're working, but at the same time, if somebody's walking in on these sidewalks into a, into a business...
Well, I guess I have a policy question for you, because I was told that the policy was that we did not do it on overtime.
So here's, yeah, but let's, let's step back from that, because if that, it seems to me, and I don't want to speak for the whole board here, but the, that every storm is going to be a different storm, and that if you spend eight hours with somebody in a machine getting from Public Health or whatever, Route 15 to shaws, that's a poor value proposition. It's a, because you have, so it, I don't know, you know, I don't know about setting policy or not setting policy, but it's like, probably Sunday night was probably the most important night to, after it stopped raining, right? Because then you could at least sort of pre-treat and clear out drains as much as you can. You know, you don't know that, because how the hell do you know that until you look at the forecast? But it seems to me that the policy should be a run of resource allocation staffing as related to priority places in town, depending on what the storm is.
So we were still in on Sunday night until like midnight, I couldn't...
I get it, Heather, but if everybody's in, I mean, I, we got to be careful with this, because we've been dealing with these storms in this community for long, long times. So like, people are going to, because the hard part we have is, but these are more extreme and they swing more. But like, but the same token is, this is what just like going to high school was when I was a kid. Like, so it's, it's a balancing act. And so I just like, I don't, I'm not saying that we didn't do anything right this time, I'm just saying, let's not talk about why this didn't go the way we want to, let's just talk about what we're going to do to make it go better going forward, because these are surmountable problems.
And I just, I agree with our Chair, but I just want to go back to this policy decision, because I don't remember...
This was what I was told when I came in, so I backed down.
No, no, I know, I just, I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to say, like, who told you, and did they say it's a Board of Selectmen policy decision? Because I don't remember sitting here and saying that the sidewalks were not a priority.
It did come from my crew, that that was the decision, that they were told that we weren't doing sidewalks on overtime.
Okay, so I...
I could try to dig it up, we could try to...
Well, no, but I mean, to me, okay, so we did have, we do still have a bylaw in the books which we haven't enforced for years and that was a policy decision. We were going to remove it, which said everybody on 131 does their own sidewalks. However, we did, did decide as a board because of the outcry from residents and businesses. You know, you try to emphasize that as a town, you are, you emphasize walkability. We love that. We're walkable. Well, we're not walkable if we're not maintaining the 131 sidewalks to all our businesses. And we're not business friendly if we don't have those in shape for people to go into the restaurants and shops.
Beyond that. It's not like so someone doesn't split their head open.
Exactly.
More what is the concern?
Right. So exactly. That's why I said if somebody slips and falls.
Yeah.
But what we did decide as a board because which had said, well, let's take it off. And then the recommendation was, well, no, well, we'll leave it on. In case we ever go back to that bylaw, but we're not going to enforce it. We're going to take care of it. And the concern also was from 131 residents, um, businesses and the few houses that are there is that, you know, they could shovel and then the plows go by and the, the state piles on. So we said, we will do them. But that is, and I am not familiar with not making walkability on 131 a priority. Um, because now we have assumed that role. And again, somebody's walking into Kaizen or wherever, um, and there's a slip and fall.
20, so you're gonna.
Well, I'm sorry, at 131 right through 20, yes, thank you for correcting me. 20, 20 is a mess. We assumed shoveling for those, those areas. And I personally think we do have to pay overtime. We're either going to do it, like, or we're not going to do it.
In for a penny.
And we can't have them in the condition that they are.
And I need more equipment.
Well.
To be honest.
Or we need, we need something, but those, it's not walkable right now. There are some sections of 131 that have not been touched at all.
I know.
No, no, but I mean, not even from the last, um, rainstorm. Like if you get further out by, yes, if you get further out by like, um, Cumberland Farms and from Arnold Road and out.
That's 20, 20.
Yes, I'm talking about 20, but that's where all our restaurants are. I'm sorry. I'm talking about 20. 131, we basically have Shaw's Plaza. And 20 is the strip where we try to emphasize our businesses and walkability and parents are out. You know, I got a text. She's got a newborn. She tried to go for a walk on one of the sunnier days. And all I'm saying is we're either doing it or not. And if we're not doing it with overtime, that means those sidewalks are going to stay like this for another week. I don't think that's acceptable. I think we have to use overtime in order to get 20 sidewalks. Okay.
I don't have a piece of equipment that, that will go on 20 sidewalks.
Somebody gets hurt and we're in trouble.
I think Chase said something you wanted to say.
Well, I just, I, I personally would recommend doing it with overtime, but I don't think that's the issue here. I think the issue is she just doesn't have the help right now to do it. I think she's focusing the help on the roads and we don't have someone on the sidewalks, which that needs to change. I agree. I'm not disputing that.
Right.
But like.
No, but Chase, I, the reason I brought it up is she said, I understand it's policy that I wanted to correct.
And I'm saying, I, me personally, as a voting member, would vote to do the overtime, but I just, I don't think that's necessarily the biggest gripe here. You just don't.
Machinery, to be honest.
No, Robert, I got a timeout there. These sidewalks have been done for 20 years and now we're saying we don't have.
Well, I have equipment. So.
Right.
We have different pieces of equipment. There's two different pieces of equipment. We use a small, um, bobcat machine on the 131 because there's no, because they're wider.
Yeah.
131 going this way with, with, you know, with the thrower and everything else, which when it's not icy, we can do in one day. We usually get them done the next day without a problem because that machine's very effective and very efficient. But they're so iced over right now, just like the roads, it's so hard to deal with, that it's just very slow right now.
But here's, here's, let's all step back from this for a minute. We are not micromanaging a particular storm. We are talking about how do we not find ourselves in this situation next year? And we've had and given that they're, and again, these storms are in some ways more difficult, but we've had a couple of failures this year. Uh, in, in snow removals here and there, 501 Maine, these things, the thing, and that's not your failures. It's not a, anybody's particular failures. These are structural failures. These are things that we have to not have happen next year. So rather than continue going down this road and sort of trying to sort it out right now, let's just not be in this situation next February. Sound good? Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, let's move on. Um, what, what other, anything else Heather you want to hand out in the report?
I just wanted, I know that we briefly talked about, you guys got the final version of the, um, pavement management plan. Um, and it's a survey. It's very, very extensive. I will say there's a lot of very good information in here. I'm not going to dwell on it. We are right at about a, you know, a C level. We are probably better than a lot of the communities around. I will say some of the ones that are lower are probably on private roads because we did have them look at some of the ones that are private. So there's classification. But I think it gives us a good step on how to, um, where to put our money and how to look at different roads in different situations. Um, which is really helpful. Um, this is, I'll, I will send out some links that you'll be able to look at this in a digital format too. Because I know in a black and white format, it's really hard to see. And I agree because I'm like, ah, it's not, it's much prettier.
Hard copy color, but you didn't want to print them off for everybody unless you knew you wanted them.
It's probably easier to look at it on the computer and there's links that you can log right onto this website because it's, I don't know, Chase, I don't know if you're familiar, but Beta does this for a lot of communities. So there's a website that we can look at and you can look at right online, um, and be able to look at it. So I will, I will send that to you guys. So, you know, through the office, so you can look at it online.
And could I ask, uh, Mr. Chair, if we could get like a little summary from you on this, like we'll look at it, we'll review it and then you, if you.
Yep.
Type up a little what you're planning on doing and then we can.
So I'll type up a year, the plan for this year from this is what, which is what we're doing next with it so that we know what we're putting out to bid. I will tell you there'll be a, a priority on, so if you look at it, this has a really good cost benefit analysis table. So there'll be a priority in doing some of those things that are the best cost benefit analysis. There are some other things that we have to do. Maple Street, we're going to do Maple Street and Jameson, which are probably not the highest cost benefit analysis, but there's other reasons why we're going to do them. So we're going to measure it out that way. And, um, before I come back next time, you'll have that, what that list is. And we'll even tell you what that's going to do to your, um, projections for next year because I can go to him and say, I want to do this. And he'll tell me, oh, that's going to make you go to here, you know?
Yeah, please give it to us in phases. Because this is, no, I'm not being flip. I mean, I mean, really like.
This is an intense report when you're not used to looking at it. There's a lot of information here, but it's more just because they all looked at every road in town. It's not something we're doing. This is a long-term planning document.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah. This is not, we're not going to go and do the $10 million.
That's, that's what I want to be clear for anybody who looks at this in the public. Uh, if this is $12 million, that doesn't mean we need 12 million of road repairs. That is if you got every road to perfection.
Correct. Right now.
Even a road that got paved last year, that you are going to put another 3,000 into or 5,000 into. So it, just so people are aware, it's not that we're like have 12 million of horrible roads.
And then I'm done. If you have any questions on any of my reports.
Uh, I don't. If you could just get us that phase report and, uh, otherwise, anything else? I don't have anything. Thanks Heather.
Well, I'm staying to answer your questions on any of those other items that next couple.
No snow.
No snow. Next couple of things are, are mine. So if you have any questions, I'll just stay available.
Okay. Well, we will then move on to, well, Robin.
Oh, Robin's stuff.
Yeah, let's do, go Robin and then we'll get to that.
Um, and some of this might touch on Heather anyway. Sixty-seater ADA, we met with McClure to get the project bid. You'll see bids going out for the, we are, actually already have the playground equipment. I think it's stored at DPW now. This is to actually get all the grading and the, the pour fill, uh, the, the footing for the ADA compliance for sixty-seater. We're on schedule with if the bid schedule and all goes well and we get the bids we expect and the weather stops doing something stupid by April 1st. Um, and we can actually do something out there. Uh, we are looking at May 15th, which gives us a good four weeks before summer programs if, of wiggle room if we have to. Uh, Tantasca Civics, Barbara, Heather, Devon and I, um, went and several members of the Sturbridge Police Department were invited to Tantasca. We had a group of, uh, young men who were interested in road improvement and road repair and pothole improvement. And they on their own reached out to us. It's not part of any current project that they're doing. It was something they had sort of learned in a civics class and wanted to follow up. So they tried to reach the governor's office, I guess, didn't have much success, try and get the top. So they reached out to us.
The bottom.
They came to the bottom. They, you know, me. And, um, and we all went out there and had a, a great presentation from them. We had a discussion. And we're probably down the road going to have them come in maybe to town hall and meet with Representative Smoller and talk to them about targeting state funding and how it works and chapter 90 money and all that stuff. So just, it was just a real interesting day and I really want to credit, uh, Tantasca, the, the, the civics and the history and economics teacher there who was involved in this. And the, uh, the fact that these kids were taking such an interest in civics was, I had to bring it up because it was like such an enlightening, nice, happy moment. Um, Senior Center, uh, the open house is tentatively March 1st, but we may have to put a small delay on that. Uh, we will update you as we can go. Project is generally going along. They will be in the building by March 3rd for at least first floor programming. Um, so we're, we're moving in. That's all going along. We're just having some issues with elevator inspections. And that may cause us a little bit of a delay, but because it's on Otis's and the state's schedule, I can guarantee that February 28th it'll be done. And we will, should know in a day or two if we're staying with March 1st. I will put that out publicly.
Right.
Uh, National Grid, again, a reminder, March 13th at Joshua Hyde Library from 3:00 to 7:00. Grid is going to be there for any member of the public that has questions. We know a lot of people are seeing delivery charges skyrocket, uh, but there are different options of who they can purchase through, things like that. National Grid might be able to help them a little bit with that. Potent Road, that, there was an administrative issue on the advertising that will be, um, heard February 24th here. Uh, we have worked with, everybody was expressed a concern, uh, about a tree. We had actually only a few people express concerns about their private trees. Uh, there's also the, this is actually the scenic road hearing, but there's also room for a whole host of discussion. Any person who did have a concern has been addressed. We went out there personally in some cases to look at the trees that there were concerns about. There's been compromise and agreement. Uh, every member who has a tree on their property has got to actively sign off to allow National Grid onto their property. And we have sent reminders out to all of them. We've sent notices out to all of them as well as the, the people, just the concern about the scenic route. So that public hearing is here on the 24th, which is a week from yesterday. Center of Hope, um, I had a great visit down today for, at the Center of Hope. They had a little, uh, lunch and tour for, um, just local members of the community. I think one of the things that's great is they actually have tenants in that building, uh, that are regular business owners who employ people with challenges. Uh, things that I know Candyland, the game, they actually, uh, package the extra pieces down there. They have people with challenges who are packaging. I met a young woman who has some challenges, who does screen printing for all the baker, um, cake decorating things, the bakery quality ones. And she was actually doing the screen printing herself and packaging them up. But really very inspiring, uh, just nice to know they're there. Um, we're talking, I'm talking to talk to them about maybe some services we could have, um, that people with some challenges could do within the town. Uh, there are opportunities that we may have for them. I also have hustling, a reminder, I need people with disabilities to join my disabilities commission. So I made a shameless pitch down there while I was at lunch.
Great.
So, um, that is it.
All right. So moving on to the action items, uh, so we, first one is consideration of possible action to approve the driveway permit fees increase.
I want to jump in quickly. We recently did the, um, the, uh, sealer of weights fees, which is a state thing. Uh, we did the inspection fees that, not that long ago. One of the reasons you're seeing this is the town is every, I think it's five years, supposed to be reviewing its fee schedule. It has not been done in a lot longer than five years. So I don't want people to think we're just, let's, let's charge people fees. Uh, this should have been an ongoing thing and we're just trying to catch up on it. And I'll let Heather explain these fees.
All right. Heather, please explain the fees.
So, um, one of our fees that we do in the DPW, we ask, look at our fees, was our driveway permit. So I did a comparison of other local towns and then I did an actual time cost analysis of what it actually usually takes us to look at one of a, a driveway, typical driveway permit. So you can see there that we're currently at $50. Everybody else almost is, um, at more than that. They, some, you know, Auburn, Webster are still at 50, but they have, Auburn has a commercial fee. Palmer, Southbridge are both at 100. Um, the cost spent, the time analysis came out to about $163. If you look at what we do for, in the, all our inspections and different reviews. Um, so it can go either way. I recommend at least going up to $100. You could definitely justify 150. Um, but I think $100 from 50 is probably about right where we should be.
All right. Questions from the board?
Seems fair to me. I mean, I think, now, do they get a, when they come in for a driveway permit, do they get any type of bond for the road or is there any holdback that they pay the town or?
Um, so they don't, um, if, it depends on what they have to do. If they have to cut into the road, then they have to do a bond. But if they're just doing the driveway, there's nothing.
There's nothing. Okay.
The only time we would hold anything is if it was, the house was going to be built and they hadn't finished the driveway, then we ask them for a bond. So that we can release the house and have them do it in the spring and then they get their money back.
All right. So you're looking for 100, 150?
100 is fine.
100 is fine.
If it costs us 166.
Huh?
If it's costing us $166 to check these out, shouldn't we go to 150 at least?
Uh, it's fine with me.
I'm, I'm either way. I just feel, sometimes I feel bad, like, you know, if somebody's coming to build a new house and the fees are already high. But you're right. It is, it does cost us that. That's what I figure.
$66 is the holdup on the new house. They've got other problems.
You're right.
Um, so the, um, all right, so, uh, so do we want to, do we want to do most of the cost or do we want to, uh, pass through the entire cost? That's really the question. I, I think it's kind of six and a half dozen.
Yeah, I'm indifferent on it, to be honest with you. I.
I think we should go for the 150.
It's fine with me. Anybody else have any strong feelings? All right. Do, I'll make a motion to approve a driveway permit fee increase to $150.
Second.
All's in favor? Great. All right. Cemetery services fee increase.
So basically I did the same thing. Um, I didn't do the whole cost benefit analysis because there's too many moving parts when you start going that way. But, um, you can see, we haven't raised our fees in the cemetery in, it, it's probably even before 2020. And I did list, I looked at Southbridge, I looked at Sanian Cemetery, which is, um, basically all the Catholic ones have the same, Charlton, Oxford, Auburn, Webster. I did an average in a mean, and then I have a recommendation for the fees over there on the farthest column. So there's a lot purchase, which includes the perpetual care, cremation purchase, again, with the perpetual care. Then there's the cost for a burial, um, during the week and a cremation during the week. And then there's the additional fees for winter, which we do have right now. Just so you know, we definitely are doing that. And weekend fees and holiday fees, which are basically the same as the winter fees.
See, this one I'm a little more concerned about because this, unlike someone who's building a house.
I know.
You, you, this $500 could hit somebody who really needs the $500 in a way that, if you're building a house, you're building a house. It's, it's a economic positive statement. Even if you lost the house, it's still a win probably for you. Whereas if you're dealing with, some people are on fixed incomes, live in, $200 might be some, a senior's food. So I'm a little.
Yeah, that, I mean, I.
More gun shy on this, but I, I may be being too, uh.
We are considerably lower than most of the other ones in the area and this would just bring us basically to be right in the same range.
Well, yeah, but that's a lot of, that's a, that logic can get a little dangerous.
I know.
I, I agree with Jay, um, I agree with our chair on this. I think, I think it's kind of a big, I know that we're comparing ourselves to others, but. I think it's kind of a big increase to go from 5 to 750. I mean, Southbridge is 600, Charlton's 650.
I can also tell you that South, you can see that date, that is the last time that they raised theirs was the 2014.
Right. I mean.
Webster just did an increase. They are up to 1,000.
I, I don't know. I think that that's just, I, I think that's a lot. I don't really love the idea of hitting a widow for a couple of hundred bucks on, when they're going through something. It's just not. I don't know. Of all the things we spend money on, maybe I'm being too dramatic.
Well, what amount would you suggest?
I mean, I, I guess from a budget perspective, these don't seem outcome determinative to me at all. The difference between 500 and doing, and 750, I mean, I'd just keep it at 500 frankly. I don't know. But I might be, I might be being too, I, I'm, I'm not, uh, you know, I don't have religion on this particular point. Does everybody else think I'm talking a lot?
I, I would either leave, I would either leave it alone or I'd, I'd go to 600. I feel like we, you know, I agree with Jamie on this one. I, I just don't see us in desperate need of, of this money.
Okay, 600 then sounds.
If, if you want to make that motion.
It's an increase, but it's not to the extreme that you have problems with.
I, I'll probably keep it at 500, but if you guys want to go to 600, I don't think that's particularly.
Yeah.
You know, I, I get it.
Do we have a budget problem right now with?
So we definitely, so we don't have.
I mean, we have a lot of free cash. I know that.
We did, we, that's another discussion.
I know, I know, I know. It's two different things.
But is there, but that's a fair question. Is there a budget problem in this Heather?
So we don't, we don't use any of our cemetery mon, money that goes in perpetual care. This goes into your general fund when you do the fees. The perpetual care is part of it. Right now, we don't use that to supplement the DPW budget and other communities I've been at that they had. So that like there would be part of the perpetual care would go to that every year. Um, right now, we're not doing that. Um, I think we should look into doing that because obviously the, we've spent some significant amount of time on the cemetery and it's supposed to be funding itself.
Are they revolving in other towns?
Um, no, it's a, it's a perpetual care fund, at least where I was and when I was in Southbridge. It went into its own fund, which I believe it does here, part of this. And it basically can grow money. can grow money, and that's the way, you know, it can earn its own interest, and that's what it's supposed to be coming off of. I will say, what you don't have, maybe as a budgetary crisis fund, is you do have a space crisis fund coming up. We don't have, we're running out of space.
Well, yeah, but that's a distinct...
But it is separate.
No, I get it. I don't know, I'm just going to have Amir throw me in the swamp, but the, but I don't really want, and so I'm, I think I'd prefer to fund this from the down. I don't want to do this myself. So there's a motion.
I'll leave it alone, too. I'll leave it at 5.
Yeah, I'll stick with you there.
Yeah.
The only thing I would ask is there's a couple fees that we don't have that would be good to have some clarification on, that we just never had a really good clarification on, like, that we should set a foundation fee, which I do believe we are losing money when we're doing $50 a square foot, because it takes a couple guys, a couple, you know, more than a couple hours, so you're losing money on that. So I would recommend going to the $125 a square foot for a foundation fee. It's still not going to be anything astronomical cost, it's just going to cover our costs, and that we should set a flat marker fee of $100, because we really don't have a fee right now.
I still, I just know too many people that are on controlled incomes in this place, so I'm, everybody knows what I think, but I'm maintaining these fees myself. If we have motions to do it, Heather does, please make them. And by Heather does, I meant what Heather said.
So yours is not a motion.
Do we charge anybody for a flat marker?
Yeah, mine is not a motion.
Are we charging for a flat marker?
So that's where it gets crazy, that we go and we set these, but we don't have a set.
Are we putting the flat marker out for free effectively?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I just didn't, I'm just asking, because I don't know.
I mean, if we run into a money problem, and I see all the numbers, but just because we reviewed it, I agree, I mean, I just feel like, just leave our seniors alone that are facing this.
Or people in drama, I, you know.
Well, somebody make a motion then.
That's fine. There's no motion, it's just that we don't change it.
We just increase the houses of happy people.
Oh, yeah. I think we're going to hold on that, Heather, but if it, please don't, we understand what you're trying to do, though, and I don't mean to be at all moralistic about it, and because, you know, you got to keep the train on the track. So if it becomes an issue or something, we have to evaluate further, that's fine, but within the larger spend we have, it seems like something we can handle.
I guess that's more of a question for Barbara and Robin to make a determination than me to say.
Yeah.
I can give them a cost of what it takes us to do the, and then they can...
Yeah. If it's something we got to revisit, I'm, you know, we'll sort it out. Okay, so I think those are the two...
These ones, yeah.
Yeah, so then we're on the cemetery policy, or is that this?
Yep.
Yeah.
And, and basically, I don't need, we don't need to do anything, there's just not, there is not been a very clear, there hasn't been a policy for Sturbridge that I could find anywhere. So we, we took some of the other local policies and tried to form them up, and figured that we formalized it here. I have had some residents come to me and say that they would like to see a policy, because I do think sometimes, like, everything's kind of a little willy-nilly down there. So this was in an effort to try to do that, for purposes of cleaning up down there, and what can be placed, and how, sizes and things, it's just to do some more uniformity. And really, there's nothing in there that we're not already trying to do, but it kind of cleans it up, like, when we will ask people to remove their decorations for spring and fall and winter and things of that nature. So I would ask that you go ahead and read through this, and make sure that there's not anything you want to edit out, but, you know, I can tell you that my staff has looked at it, I've looked at it, it's very similar to what they have in Southbridge, and some of the things they have in Charlton and Oxford, so I believe.
Can I just ask what a mock burial is?
So sometimes people want to have a service in the cemetery, but they don't actually want to bury someone.
Interesting.
What do they do with them?
Well, a lot of times, like, there's a cremation, they might keep them and decide they're going to earn at home. And sometimes they keep them in the urn at home until their spouse dies, and then they want to bury them at the same time. So, you know, a lot of people make a lot of decisions that they might want something in a cemetery for purposes of this is where they will be buried finally, but they don't want to put them, and usually, it is almost always just cremations, obviously, but...
That's good.
And why would any town charge for, it doesn't involve a town employee, right?
Yes.
Oh, it does?
Mm-hmm.
Oh. The town employee has to be present?
We set up for that and everything else.
Oh, okay.
Oh, nice. Oh, I should don't know who you bury.
Oops. No, no, this was the mock. I was tied up with a mock.
It's like first, uh, Landrick, consider yourself admonished.
Oops.
You laughing?
You're all worried about the widow, allowing your mock burying people. Jesus, get bad tonight.
Well, any questions from the board, other, other questions?
Seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I didn't see any for myself.
So have we never had a policy before?
No.
Okay. So, not that I could find on the books, let's put it that way.
So is this, is this kind of memorializing, I don't mean to use a pun on words, what our policy has been unwritten? Or are we creating policy? Because I just, on the second paragraph, it says, "Only residents may purchase a lot." The only exception being that the father or mother, who are non-residents, may have purchased for them by, so the children can purchase for their parents. Is that what that, is that, but only two, two graves? So like, not a mother, father, and a step parent, just the two. Is this, has this been our practice, or is this a limitation?
Well, I think we're trying to clarify our practice. Our practice is basically that, right, currently, we only allow town residents, and I, there's been some flexibility in there in the past for different situations, because we have, you know, somebody who is, you know, common law wife that isn't technically a resident, but this person has had purchased it in the past, and wasn't a resident, moved away, but now she wants to be buried next to them, what do we say? No? No, I don't say no. I'm pretty far.
Right, no, I agree. I just didn't know if this was an expansion, or a limitation, or it's just putting and writing what our practice is.
I think it's just more and more, more of a memorialization of what our practices are. I mean, have that situation come up in, since I've been here? No. But this is something to give us some guidance. I mean, you can always put in, we could always put in something that there is flexibility of, you know, at the allowance of the DPW director in special circumstances type of things, you know?
I kind of like, I kind of like that.
You could have a unique situation pop up. I mean, it just stuff happens.
I mean, we can add something like that.
Just a little flexibility, so that it's not so limited to those two graves, in a certain situation that we maybe can't even think of right now. So there's some discretion built in.
And I would say the board accept that, I don't know if you necessarily would want that at a public hearing, if there's some very personal...
And a lot of times, a lot of these things can't wait, you know? We get calls two days, three days. You know, we're not waiting a couple weeks to make a determination on, I don't think you want it.
So let's do this, let's get some, sort of, release, not release, but some sort of discretionary language added, and then maybe take a look at it next time.
Yeah. And if anybody wants to read through and sees anything else they have questions on, please feel free to, but I will put some discretion, I agree.
Yeah. Thanks, Heather. Okay, so then we're moving on to action item D, consideration of possible action, authorize the chair to sign the proposal for professional entry hearing services, Phase II stormwater programs. What's going on here?
So this is a continuation of the work that we've been doing with Thai and Bond for compliance with our MS4 permit. So this is our yearly MS4, what we're planning to do this year. You have already appropriated the funds last town meeting, so we're catching up, getting ready for our spring work. Some of these things we have to do on a yearly basis, our IDD and our training is in here, but this is also doing some more, expanding on the sampling that we did last year, to do our catchment investigations, which is going to be an ongoing year-to-year thing until year 10, when we have to be completely done. So it's taking a phased approach and walking through it, so...
Okay. Any questions from the board? All right.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to authorize the chair to sign the proposal for professional engineering services in PDES Phase II stormwater program. Fiscal year 25 stormwater assistance with Thai and Bond and the amount of $93,000 to be completed no later than June 30, 2025.
I think it's 93,300.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Mm-hmm.
Great. Okay, and then we are moving on to consideration of possible action, discuss and approve contract with Thai and Bond for above-ground storage tank replacement design services for $64,000, paid from the FY '25 Capital Improvement Fund. Do we have questions for Heather on this? Or, no, Heather, tell us what we're doing, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'll tell you about it first. So this is the replacement of our underground storage tanks, and the design for the above-ground tanks to replace them. So as you know, we had an issue with our diesel tank down there. We had appropriated some funds for that design. This is to be able to do that design, so that we can figure out how much it's going to cost to actually...
You know, that's down at the...
That's at the DPW, yeah.
And so what do we think that the, do we have any sense of what the actual...
Cost for the replacement's going to be? I'm, I would, my best sense is probably about a half million dollars.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm glad Jason agrees with me.
$63,000 on that type of design work makes sense. Okay. Do we have any other questions, thoughts, concerns? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a, a motion to approve the contract with Thai and Bond for above-ground storage tank replacement design services for $64,000, paid from fiscal year 25 Capital Improvement Fund.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? You guys have it? Great. All right. Consideration of possible action, discuss and approve contract with Thai and Bond for contract administration and oversight for the Route 20 sewer main lining project, paid from FY '24 Article 41 for $59,000.
So Thai and Bond had done the design for this, we've gone out to bid, we got some really good bid prices, you, we've already awarded that contract. This is for them to help with that contract administration, and be available for some observation work on that, and review of the semittals and things of that nature for the contract administration, so...
And what is the principal, what functionality of the administration work they're doing with the contract, just reporting?
So they'll review the, the pay requests, they'll review the semittals, they'll, we'll have some, you know, ongoing meetings with the contractor to be able to check in on the progress. It's kind of good to have them involved, this is, there can be some things that can happen, especially since we're going to be working on, in Route 20. So let's hope everything's all nice and smooth, which is what we want, but it's, it's good to have them ready in case we do run into any problems, too, and make sure that the contractor's following the permit and regulations.
How long is this project going to be?
Um, so I don't have a schedule from the contractor yet, but what they're saying is probably about, right, from three months to three to six months. They're thinking it'll be done by September. So most of this work will be, in Route 20, will be done at night, so you won't see the impact to that as much. And, you know, we're not going to be digging. We do have some work that will be done on the side streets, but that will probably be done in the day, and that will be done actually before, as soon as we get them, everybody's on board, we'll be probably starting that, and the weather is not miserable like this, but hopefully, like, sometime in March.
All right. Any other questions, concerns, thoughts? All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Thai and Bond for contract administration and oversight for the Route 20 sewer main lining project, paid from fiscal year 24, Article 41, for $59,000.
Do we have seconds?
Second.
Great. All those in favor? Excellent. All right. Thanks, Heather, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Heather.
All right, we're moving on to action item G, consideration of possible action to approve a grant of trail easement for, from Old Sturbridge Village to the town for land on Stallion Hill Road.
Issue all had approved to move forward to town meeting last year. This is that parcel of land in the parking lot of Stallion Hill, just to make it safer where the, separates the parking and the actual trail access a little bit. So OSV's board approved it, it's gone through all the legal mumbo jumbo, and this is just to vote to officially sign it tonight. And Lynn will notarize it once you all sign it tonight. Actually, I think Jamie has to say it.
And we thanked them for this, right?
Yes.
I mean, in a, some kind of a letter.
I'll send a more, if you want to follow up and make sure. I think I sent something initially, but I can send a follow-up now that it's fully...
Yeah.
Yeah, please do, that'd be great.
Yeah.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a grant of trail easement from Old Sturbridge Village to the town, land on Stallion Hill Road.
All right, I will second. All those in favor? Great.
We'll have you sign that, CJ, so Lynn can actually notarize it right now.
Okay, don't tell me what to do, Lynn. Uh, the, all right, moving on. So do you want me to do this right now for you?
Yeah, just so you can...
All right, moving on, I'll, I can do two things at once.
Yeah, you could do this.
Consideration of possible action on consolidation of facilities manager and IT director positions, and the director of IT and facilities is approved by the personnel committee, is a grade A. Robin?
So, last meeting, Jeremy came, and I asked for the board's support on me taking this concept forward. The board did vote to support that. Jeremy was here to answer questions, unfortunately, well, fortunately for him, he is somewhere warm right now, and couldn't be here, but I didn't want to postpone it any longer. He has done the work in the short term for the past several weeks, he's ramping up and getting handle on it. The, putting Jeremy aside, the position itself makes a lot of sense. This proposal you see tonight for this consolidation of positions, and then the creation of what right now is a 25-hour part-time position, yields about a $30,000 savings, 30,000 to 40,000, 30,000, 35,000 off the budget in savings, because we're, instead of two directors positions, a director and a part-time admin slash tech position. If we find that we can use that position more next year, we might put some of that back, but we'd still be yielding about a $10,000 to $15,000 savings from the format we had before. I think this provides us more efficiency, allows Jeremy to work on larger projects and have a help desk person. We'll get into the second position, but since we're talking about them all together, it makes sense for me to discuss them together. That second position will also do things like calling in janitorial supplies and helping people with software. I lost a document, the warrant, I was working on the warrant, I lost the warrant, I called someone. Jeremy had to stop everything he was doing. So those types of things, plus facilities admin stuff, plus working with, for instance, Tantascwa, instead of hiring a car printer to do a small job, we just need someone to we just need someone to do that kind of outreach to take that burden off of the facility slash IT director. So, the position proposed to you tonight was voted on by personnel today. What you see in front of you now that I left tonight was just there were two tweaks on two bullet items. They are the best proofreaders in the world, and they are absolutely fastidious about using an exact term like oversee versus, you know, works with. So, there are very minor adjustments on those. It stays grade eight. Both positions are currently grade eight, so the merging of them keeps it at a grade eight. It comes in at a little higher because it supervises more, but given that the salary will reflect very high on the scale of an eight, it's appropriate. So, he would go to one fifteen immediately, and then he would get another adjustment. Once he gets full certifications, he's going to do an extra procurement training for us, which I'd like another person procurement-trained and certified, and OSHA training that's required, and he's willing to do both.
And so, the position that we're creating, how many hours was the secondary position?
Twenty-five for the part-time for now.
So, is that the IT technician position?
That's the IT technician position.
And what is that going to pay per hour?
That's, I think, twenty-five an hour for twenty-five hours.
All right. Questions on the board on really?
We haven't set up a salary. It came in at a grade three today with personnel. It's likely going to be twenty-three to twenty-five an hour.
So, I mean, I was very, I'm sorry, I interrupted. I was very much in favor of combining them, and I think Jeremy has the support of staff, too, from everybody I've spoken with, but he doesn't feel he can do it. You know, for years, we didn't even have a facilities manager for many years, and I just wondered, he doesn't feel he can do it without this part-time position?
No, no. He needs the help desk work, because every time he gets involved in something, he gets stopped to fix a printer, literally. And if he's working on taking over, for instance, green communities, which we took out, Jeanne Bouban was doing green communities here. It doesn't belong under your plan. It belongs under the facilities manager. So, when I came, that was something I could take off Jeanne's plate that really doesn't belong there, monitoring the grant, monitoring what we're getting in subsidies. The facilities position works, for example, at all of our net metering and solar credits. Those are projects that take some time at a desk uninterrupted, and he's not going to be, I would set him up for failure if I didn't have that position. Realistically, the town should have both. We feel, I think, that it didn't need to be two full-time positions. It's certainly not two full-time plus tech, but we're combining and basically taking what were two high-end positions and making one and a half.
Okay. A good check.
No, I apologize. I missed the meeting today. I thought it was Thursday.
Well, in fairness, it changed four times with the weather, so.
It's confusing, and I still can't find my thing. I'm not really in favor of this.
The, all three of them, or just?
Well, it seems to me that we're creating a position and an assistant for a particular person who is not certified in certain areas yet.
Oh, he will be. No, no, he's going to get OSHA certified. Yes, yes.
But he's not. I just assume wait until he is certified. I would also like to see, you know, you're talking about saving. Well, how much are we saving? I would like to see some numbers.
Oh, I, well, I can get you that, yeah. I think we talked about it last time, but.
I mean, it's nothing I wouldn't have said at the personnel meeting, but.
No, and I think that we did discuss the numbers at the last meeting, Mary, if I'm recalling it correctly. But, so, let me understand this. So, you're, the, are you opposed to doing it? Or do you think we should slow this down and break it apart more until we figure out what? Like, it probably gets all the certifications and all the functions.
Yeah, well, it's kind of the same thing. I would like it slowed down so we can get numbers and really certified. I mean, because if we went out looking for someone, I'm sure we could get someone that is already certified with the.
Not for a hundred and fifteen thousand.
Certificates. Well, that's, I want to see numbers. I want to see numbers, Mary Lou.
I don't know if this is fair to Jeremy.
Well, it says it's class-saving. Well.
Well, I'll tell you, we were paying, Robin would have been coming in approximately ninety. I was going to look to try to hire someone for low eighties. Jeremy will be making one fifteen as opposed to he would have gone up to, I'm trying, he's getting, he was going to get whatever the COLA raise would be. And next year, he'd be getting an increase. So, he was going to be at one twenty. She was about, they were both going to be at about eighty, so there's about, and again, my number's not accurate. It's about a forty, forty-five thousand dollar savings by combining the two director positions. The part-timer at twenty-five hours times twenty-five comes in, I think, at about twenty-some-odd thousand dollars. It's about, after he gets the raise, it will be, Jeremy gets the full raise next year because he only gets partial now. He doesn't get the rest till he certifies. After it's all said and done, I think it comes out to about a fifteen to twenty thousand dollar savings right now.
I'd like to see.
I can give you the exact number. I will say this. I will not put Jeremy formally into the position until I hire the tech position, because I will set him up for failure. And I couldn't hire someone without them having, nobody would take that job right now without some assistance. He's also taking janitorial staff.
Let's slow it down. So, there's a list of issues here. The first issue, I think, and I think we, and I kind of think Mary Lou was saying this about the fair to Jeremy piece of it. We represented in the last meeting that we were comfortable with consolidating these roles, and we basically did that to his face. So, I think that that's a, I think we've sort of reached that decision. I can't see how we can go back on a good employee after doing that. So, that's my first, I don't want.
Yeah, but it's good.
But just give me a second, Mary, because I don't, I think there's other pieces here. So, then there's the, your point about, and we understand the combining two salaries, the one role. That's obviously creates space. And then there, and then, but there is a period where he's not doing procurement, and he's not doing occupational safety. I think those are the two certifications you mentioned.
He's starting them right away, yes.
Yeah, but there's a, there's a lag on those. And then there's a coming up, the third piece was where we're coming to a position at twenty-five dollars, which is consuming, if not really eating any of the savings from a, not any of it, but a fair amount of it, right? So, we're looking at, we're definitely reducing the budget a bit, but we might find that we need to have more tech needs, and then Jeremy gets pulled in a different direction, because there's only, there is a certain amount of finite hours. So, there's a lot there. So, I guess that that part of it, and I'm not against having someone who's focusing on IT necessarily. I can see that that could be a full-time gig here, no, no.
Well, and the administrative portion of facilities, yes.
Yeah, so, I guess it's, so just the, but I don't, but I don't see how the, has the items H and I, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks. If you want to respond to this, but I think, I think the horse is out of the barn on those.
Yeah, I agree. I think, you know, we've all agreed on, to his face, last meeting. It's now the question is on J, not H and I.
How long will it take for him to get the certifications?
The OSHA will take minimal times. He's going to go for the higher supervisor certification, which is thirty hours on his own time online.
Okay.
That will be quick. Procurement will depend on when the course runs. The reality is, that's something I'm asking. A facilities director does not have to be our accountant. I just had her take the course. I do a lot of the procurement, but he does the actual, he does, Robin did get involved in it. In all honesty, I don't believe she had taken the course and really needed to. And I'm not saying that disrespectfully. It's just it's a complicated process, and there's sometimes your mistakes, and we're always scrambling to try to be very careful of those. And so, that's why we had Shelley do it as a backup to anybody, not just the former facilities director. But it's a position that it does a lot of procurement, so it just, it's also nice for him to have. And so, I asked for that when he moved into it. Barbara and I talked, and we thought it would be really good for him to have that. The OSHA is something, as a facilities director, that I would say would be a requirement, if you will. If we had a town with a procurement agent, like a lot of larger towns do, I wouldn't be asking him to do this. Your procurement agent would take care of it.
But Robin did not do procurement. She had not taken that course.
She did her own. She had not taken the course, though.
Okay.
But she did it like Heather does it, or, yes.
Right, but this is an additional skill and requirement that you're imposing on Jeremy that Heather did not hold.
Yes, and he will not get, his raise to the one fifteen is technically his raise through July first. He will not get the remainder, the other five that he's going to get, until those are completed. So, he is literally taking that, we are requiring it for the full salary increase.
Not only OSHA, but also the procurement course?
Yes, because we really want someone else.
Right.
So, we're getting better. The reality is, I'm getting a more efficient setup, and I will say, Jeremy, when I asked him to do this, said he would, and he talked to the school department, but what they told him, it was critical for it to work that he needed a second position, because the school department has the same format. Greg does their IT and their facilities. And the one thing Jeremy said was, he can't do both without another person. And that's why I'm very hesitant to even put him into it, and then now ask him to be going through procurement training, OSHA training, doing two people's jobs, and say, well, when you get through all that, then we'll hire you assistant. I understand, Mary, your concerns, I do. But I also, if Jeremy wasn't who we knew, I don't like doing things based on, like, the person. It really should be about the position, because that's how we should be doing this. Let's say I was hiring for this position. Number one, I'd have a lot of trouble getting someone for one fifteen or one twenty. And number two, if they came in and the only staff they had was janitorial, part-time janitorial staff, and no assistants, I think they would look at that job and say, mm, no, thanks.
And I'm going to agree, may I, through the chair?
Yeah, of course.
I'm going to agree with both Jamie and our chair, and, I'm sorry, both my chair and my vice chair. We, at our last meeting, indicated that we supported combining those department heads into one position. And I know that's what the school has, and I guess other towns, it's not, we're not creating something new by combining those positions. I also like to say, I like the idea that we promote from within, because, you know, I talked to some staff, and, you know, they indicated that he was already doing some of the facility stuff that got left behind for whatever reason, or when Heather couldn't do it. So, I feel like he was already starting to do some of that. And so, he was going to get eighty-plus. The facilities manager was eighty-plus, which is one sixty-plus.
If she had stayed, that would have been closer to ninety. We were going to drop it for new hire.
So, it's like one seventy, those two department heads. So, he's basically taking two department head jobs for one fifteen, which is like a thirty-five thousand dollar raise. So, I feel like the town is benefiting very much by his willingness to, and he's going to willingly take on procurement, when we didn't even require that of our other facilities manager, who was going to be coming in around ninety thousand without it. So, my only question was, like, the only thing we didn't totally agree on, you had said we might need, you indicated that you thought we were going to need a technician assistant, but we never really hammered that part out. But we did hammer out that we supported that combined role and him filling it. So, I guess I'm going to defer to our TA on this, if she feels that he can't do an effective job without somebody. I don't know how twenty-five dollars an hour, did we actually compare a technician for other? Because, I mean, sometimes people start at twenty. I mean, I know the schools pay even less, so I don't know.
We talked today in personnel a little bit about that. Again, they settled on a grade three. We haven't settled on a hard number. We talked about it could be about twenty-three, but we have to look at the grade and where it's at. And then we pretty much have to see who we get for applicants. So, a lot of times, we don't advertise the hard number a lot of times. We'll advertise the grade with the range, and if I get a super-qualified applicant in, I might bring them in at step three or four. Or if I bring in, you know, a young hot shot out of high school, I might bring him in at a one if he's just starting. But if I've got someone who comes with five years of experience, you know, we could, they're looking at like eight to one or nine to two. I could get someone who stopped their full-time career to have a child and now wants to gradually get back into a workforce. They might have five years of experience in IT. I might pay them twenty-five, whereas I might pay someone else twenty-one in that range.
So, what do you think the actual salary of that position will be roughly, in a range?
Well, I think likely, I don't have the grade in front of me, but it's probably going to be somewhere between twenty-two and twenty-five an hour.
And twenty hours a week. So, what is that equivalent?
Five hours a week.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and Barbara had the math on it. Oh, let me do that. I can do that quickly. You can vote on the other two if you want. I just, I am just, I would just tell you on the record, I would be concerned about not having assistance when someone comes to me and says, I can do these two jobs, but I am going to need some help.
No, I get that. But, Mary, go ahead.
I was going to say, it only makes sense to me, you're taking two department heads and putting them as one. They're going to need some assistance, because that's going to be a big workload.
Sure.
And another part-time position, I don't see as a big issue. I really don't.
No, I think my issue's a little distinct from that, honestly, which is, I don't have a problem. The IT service parts of it makes sense, because when you have a bad week in IT, you have a real bad week in IT, right? Like, you can, that can be the whole, that can go, that twenty-five hours can go to fifty probably real fast, right? But the, the, it's just all very specific within the numbers and whether, and, so I guess this is what I would say. I'm comfortable with H, I, and J. I just don't think we should, kind of to Mary's, Blanchard's point, I know, I know, she probably doesn't agree with everything I'm saying here, but there is, there is a, this is a sort of outcome where the hours that are going to be needed aren't going to just be IT hours, and in fact, Jeremy's going to be more comfortable in that functionality. So, I actually don't know that that's where the support should be. And so, the, I don't know that it shouldn't be, but I just, if this isn't working, don't just keep doing it and maintain status quo. Andy, I do think that you kind of have to make this point. There is only so many hours in the day. But by the same token, if that's not the support where he finds it needing, or he can get ten hours of assistance from a vendor and get to the same place, or something like that, just don't, don't, just.
No, we're not, we're not, look, it's a growth in progress. Like Barbara said, it's growing pains, because there was a question on personnel today about would this be enough hours even? What if, is it enough hours? And we're like, we're not going to start with more. We could always add. If it turns out that things are really moving along, and we're getting a ton done, and they need more hours, you can always add next year in the budget in another year. It's much harder to cut back once you hire a full-time employee. The reality is, we advertise it at a certain number of hours that we think we're going to need. You have to make it worth somebody coming in. It comes out to thirty-two-five at twenty-five hours a week for twenty-five. And so, the, when we ask Jeremy, what do you need? What assistance do you need? What you see in that job description, he wrote that job description.
No, I get that, but my point is Jeremy's never been a facilities manager before. And so, where his supports are, we should, some of it is not, I'm not being critical of Jeremy. I'm not worried about Jeremy, else we wouldn't be giving him the job. But it's, the support is not necessarily going to be in his subject matter expertise.
Absolutely.
So, he knows that he might need that at a certain point, but he does not necessarily know. And this is, I think, what Mary's really, at the crux of Mary Blanchard's point, is like, when you're putting someone new in, and there's someone else in, there is a cost that comes with that, and that isn't an efficiency. So, we can't just sort of say, well, now we got this all, all good to go. This is a process that needs to be.
No question. And Barbara added into, even just on a tiny point, Barbara added into the job description, administrative duties for facilities, things like, because Barbara was picking up on, okay, someone's going to need to check inventory, someone's, you know. And so, we know that this job description's probably going to more, they're going to lean heavier on certain parts of it than others. These can always be adjusted or changed. We can always reduce hours on a part-timer relatively easily. It's hard to go from full-time to part-time, but when you hire someone with a range of twenty to twenty-five hours a week from, you know, and we see what we get, I don't know who we're going to get. And so, I don't want to advertise it too few hours where it's not worth somebody's.
No, I know, but that's a little distinct from the point I'm making. But anyways, so with that, do we have any?
No. I just want to reiterate that the job description is not just for IT. It's for assistance with facilities as well.
Yes.
And we added language specific to that, because you don't want to have somebody come in and say, yeah, I'm a computer guy. I'm doing IT, or woman, person, and not be willing to change the light bulb.
It may be taking a paintbrush and painting a wall.
Okay, so just as long as you make that, it's an assistant for both department head jobs that he's combining, and now he has a part-timer that will help with both functions.
I don't think we utilize, I use Tantasca as an example. I don't think we utilize those resources enough of the tech school. That person can call in, this is the job I need. Who do I need to come in and help? Jeremy doesn't need to be doing that.
No, we don't.
Right, those are the things that, yes, facilities-based.
But it's, yeah, but it's, just keep it fluid. All right, well, I'm going to, unless there's any other questions or comments on these, I'm going to make a motion to consolidate the facilities manager and IT director positions into a director of IT and facilities, as approved by the personnel committee, as a grade eight.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
Abstaining.
Okay. So.
I just, for the simple reason, I think we're moving too fast on this.
Yeah, that's understandable.
You know, and you know me, I'd like to see numbers and.
Nope, we hear you, Mary. All right, so with that, it's moving on to, again, I'm just going to make a motion to appoint Jeremy Gilbert as facilities manager and IT director with an annual salary of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars per annum. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. And then?
Abstain.
And one abstention. So, then on J, do we have a motion on consideration of possible action of creating an IT technician position, as approved by the personnel committee?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Abstain.
And then abstention.
Are we going to, at some point, get the actual, is it going to be twenty-five dollars for twenty hours?
I'll let you know once we, I will know when I hire.
Because all we did right now is create the position.
You don't typically set, we put it in.
We'll be, right. It'll be in the budget in any event.
It'll be in the budget, and I'll know when I hire someone what level of experience they have as to where they're going to fall in the grade. It's a grade three.
It's a grade three.
It's a grade three. That it is, and I don't think I put that on that. That got updated today. It is a grade three.
All right, so with that, we are moving on to action item K. And if anybody has anything to say about Chase, now is the time. Remember, moving on to K, consideration of possible action, opt out of early voting or vote by mail for the local election. Hello, Ms.
Hey, Lynn.
So, basically, this is really just bringing this forward so we can have a public hearing at the next Board of Selective Members meeting. Requirement by law that we have to have a public hearing on the opting out of, so your consideration to have a public hearing for opting out of early voting and vote by mail for the local election. When we have vote by mail and early voting, we're required by law to have so many weekend hours and whatnot. And for a local election, especially if we don't have any type of a race, it's just not feasible
Sure.
for both mailing and weekend hours. Anybody that does require, we've had a few people that have put in applications for vote by mail. I've just turned around, reached out to them, and I'm sending them out an absentee application. They're fine with that. Same type of process.
Yeah, makes sense.
I mean, it makes sense, because people can still absentee vote.
Correct, correct.
Okay, um, any other questions, comments? Do we have a, do we have a motion?
I'll see you back on the third.
Yeah, we'll do the public hearing on the third.
Well, this is.
To opt out of early vote.
Early voting or vote by mail for local election.
The upcoming election, yeah.
Yeah, but.
Public hearing.
For the public hearing.
Public hearing.
Okay.
Mary, you volunteer, we should be all over you, like, you make the motion then, right?
It's two-step, it's a write.
Okay, I'll make the motion to authorize a public hearing to discuss to opt out of early voting or vote by mail for the local election.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thanks, Lynn.
Sorry, Lynn, we kept you.
It's okay, thanks, Lynn.
That was tough.
All right, moving on, for consideration and possible action of the hiring of Gregor McGregor as special counsel to authorize the town administrator to sign a letter for engagement.
Uh, this is for a specific area, specific issue that we have going on, um, and we just want some specialized, uh, legal input.
I mean.
Discreet way of putting it.
Yeah, I mean, it was clearer than it probably needed to be.
Yeah.
Uh, but the, um, so this is for the curb wiper, the special counsel, I mean, the rates are kind of the rates on a non-large retainer. Any thoughts, concerns?
No thoughts or concerns, which is, how did you determine that you wanted this firm?
I'd actually talked to another that had come recommended, but they were conflicted. Um, this is a name I had heard, Jean Bouban also, uh, he's actually instructed courses that Jean Bouban has taken, so she was familiar with him. Uh, reputation as an environmental, uh, attorney and just generally a very strong, uh, record.
Just somebody we need.
Yes.
Okay, we have the special hearing, March seventeenth.
For, no, there's, there's a February twenty-fourth opening and a possible hearing in April for this particular issue. Oh, for us, oh, no, that's, that's a show cause for two other businesses that we don't need to have anymore because they complied with everything.
Yeah, those are the other ones.
That licenses, there is no license right now for curb wiper.
This is, yeah, there, this is still not.
No, those show, those show causes got removed because the people, immediately after the show cause letter went out, they came in and complied.
Yes.
So we're good.
All right, um, so, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to hire Gregor McGregor as special counsel and to authorize the town administrator to sign a letter of engagement.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
All right. Um, I'm going to make a motion to accept the resignation of part-time dispatcher Megan Kazavant effective February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, with our thanks for her service.
Second.
All those in favor? Um, I'm gonna make a motion to accept the donation of twenty-five dollars from Donald and Edith Ann Heward, uh, with great thanks. Where's the donation going? Is this?
Please view the camera to the top of my head.
What's that?
It's going into the police youth account.
Okay, the, yeah.
Police youth.
Okay, police youth, into the police youth account, um, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? And please send a note thanking them for their generosity. Um, all right, consideration and possible action to open the annual town meeting warrant. For town meeting to be held on April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five at seven PM at Tantasco Regional High School.
So this is still in draft form, obviously, we're still finalizing the budget, uh, warrant articles can be added, can be removed, but this is at least to officially get it open, I try to have a substantive draft when we open. Uh, what you will see in there are all of the, uh, the zoning articles have been all but approved by planning to comply with all the new accessory dwelling units for the state, you'll see those at the end. Most everything in here is our regular stuff with some new CPC-type things.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to open the annual town meeting warrant for the town meeting to be held on April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five at seven PM at Tantasco Regional High School.
Second.
All those in favor? All right. So is this gone to, has Fincoms started meeting yet?
No, cause we still haven't finished the budget.
Gotcha.
It's a very challenging budget here.
Okay, um, I mean, do we wanna go over anything right now, or do we just wanna hold and do we have more?
Hold, hold, cause, yeah.
I didn't know if anybody had anything pressing.
Yeah.
All right, um, all right, so we're, it's open, um.
Official.
Official, and then we need to.
Special.
Special town meeting?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we open the special town meeting warrant to be held upon the completion of the annual town meeting.
Great.
April twenty-eighth.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great, all right, moving on, old business, Mary Blanchard.
No.
Uh, Mary Dowling.
No.
Mary Lou.
No.
And I have nothing, new business, Mary Lou.
Nothing.
Mary Dowling.
No, oh, just in a nutshell, can you say what the suspension was for, for Ocean State?
Yeah, I mean, I'd rather than having to.
Correspondence.
There was a violation.
A violation, I think of, it was a technical, was it underage?
No, they imported liquor from, this is distributor.
Oh.
It's distributor.
Okay, so it was, yeah, it wasn't underage.
Uh, okay, so it wasn't selling to underage? Cause we used to have a grant, and they used to do sting, and they haven't done it in a number of years.
Cause the grant's not there.
Right, so that comes back.
We will, um, I know it's an item later, but to answer the question, we will, Earl is aware of this? That they cannot sell liquor for, starting from a certain date for a month, but it doesn't start tomorrow.
Okay, but it wasn't underage?
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's on, on March twenty-fourth.
Yep.
Table seven.
Okay, um, thanks, Mary. Uh, Mary Blanchard, any new business?
Uh, no.
Okay, and then correspondence, Mary Dowling.
Do we have any?
We have the Ocean State and the, and the Executive Office of Energy.
I'm gonna see if I. Okay, so we received notice of suspension, um, for Ocean State job lot commencing on March twenty-fourth and ending on April seventh, and the document stated February third, twenty-twenty-five. And the other correspondence we have is, what? Sorry, thank you. Um, a memorandum dated January twenty-twenty-five from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs.
Regarding the state of our dams.
Thank you, yes, regarding the state of our dams.
Dam dams.
Yeah, and that's it, I believe.
I think so, all right, and then we are on to minutes, which we have a bunch of. Okay, um, start with the meeting minutes of May tenth, twenty-twenty-two. Getting done again.
Yeah, I, yeah, that's, I just wanna, I mean, I get that we fall behind, and I just wanna say for the record, I'm very uncomfortable this many years later. And I know you weren't even, I don't even know if you were here in twenty-twenty-two.
That was two weeks before I got hired.
Okay, yeah, and just because, because we have.
Catching up.
Yeah, hold on, just, um, just for the benefit of everybody, because we're asked to sign on what we said and what motions we had, and it's really asking us to do something that we can't do with any degree of certainty, because we're not the ones that listen to the tape again, so if I'm attributed to saying something, you know, um, I guess we're just totally dependent on whoever drafted these, which I think, hold on though, Robin, puts the, um, board in a very difficult situation. And I just hope that, and I know, we, our, I know we have many duties, but like, if we can try not to have this happen anymore, I'm not even comfortable like six months later to try to remember who said what motion. So I really think meeting minutes have to either, if they don't happen in the next meeting, they gotta happen within the one after that, like, within a month.
They have to happen in the next meeting. Cause like, otherwise you don't, it's not, and I don't mean to be, cause you're gonna be spending, again, I understand that certain periods of time happen, the holidays and whatnot, but it is like, it's just one of those things, and I get, I know catching up is a pain, but once you catch up, it's so much easier to stay caught up than.
So if I could, that's what we're trying to work on, it has been a nightmare, I will say, uh, Alisa has done a huge amount, the reason you're seeing that one, that was a special meeting, and it had actually never been done, and we needed it done because there was a question on something from that meeting, so she had to actually go back and listen, that meeting should have been done a long time ago, that wasn't even a regular board meeting.
And I trust her judgment, and that's why, but still. All of these are from a year ago.
Right.
So if that can be a priority.
This is what it is, it is.
Not even catching up, I'm saying, for the next meeting for us to have it. And to me, it's like probably the most basic function.
And we were trying to work backwards, so keeping up on the current and then go back and catch up as we can. Alisa caught up on a lot of them, Frances has been working very much on them since she came. She's always got her earbuds in every time I go in and do meetings.
No, I know, I just, Frances is just saying.
Yeah, Frances is just not.
Yeah, just where I'm coming from.
Really, it is a priority, it is actually a, a records issue, violation issue that we have to be careful of, because you do have, I think, up to two meetings, there's a rule, up to two meetings past the time of the meeting, uh, to, to get minutes done and approved. We have to do this townwide, by the way, because we have lots of boards and commissions that meet, and little ones, like the two-hundred-fiftieth celebration, I actually have appointed a secretary, or that group appointed a secretary, because it may not be a, like, a big controversial committee, but there's a rule, it's an open meeting. And so minutes townwide are an issue, and we, we've invested a little money paying Alisa a little bit more to catch up this year, uh, because it's, it's required, and to your point, Mary, it, it puts you in a weird position to look at something you sent May tenth. You'd have to go back and listen to the meeting yourself.
Let's do this, let's by June have every Board of Selectmen, Board of Select, excuse me, Select Board meeting minutes all the way throughed, and cause we, I understand that it might be a little aggressive before the April town meeting, but.
Well, also on the minutes, we don't need as much in the minutes as we have.
That's true, yeah.
He said, she said, I mean, you basically need who made a motion, who seconded it.
And you know.
Who is the vote?
And if there's, yeah, well, and the other part of all of this is, we do have a certain amount of undergirding by everything being on YouTube. I mean, there is a point where, I'm not suggesting that they, from a legal perspective, can take the place of a meeting minute, but like.
If someone wants to hear the discussion, they can.
Yeah, so it's, it's.
They can find it.
It's mostly, I look at them as a guard, uh, not a guard, as a, as a outline or syllabus for the person who needs to get an answer about what happened, when, and why. Right, and, um, and, you know, some issues, and, and kind of against the point I think Mary and I are making, some things probably deserve a little bit more note-taking than.
Oh, yes, well, but.
And I think that's where, yeah, and I think that's where Alisa is good, because she under, she knows the town, and at some point Frances will know the town and have a sense of what, okay, this is a discussion that we probably need to vet out here in the minutes a little bit. Alisa sort of has that sense now, I think, and so Frances will get that as well, and I think once she gets her own sense of, okay, this is, like, the discussion on the IT thing should be more than just a motion. There should be just a, a little discussion of any kind of debate or dialogue. That, but most stuff, a lot of things are sort of pro forma, like the, the contracts for the sewer lining.
Well, so again, um, all right, well, with that, I think Mary raises a good point, I think.
Yeah.
I think by June, for the Board of Select Board, let's not have any outstanding meeting minutes so we go into the next fiscal year caught up, is that a fair goal?
I don't know how many are outstanding, so I can't honestly answer, but we will make it, we will make every effort.
Spend a little money to make sure we're truing it up, please do, because there's no reason at this point, we're letting me have meeting minutes from twenty-twenty-two, cause.
As I said, that was one that I don't think, uh, that would have blown up the radar completely.
Yeah.
Had we not had a request on it, that's the problem.
But we know when the meetings are, and we know whether or not we have the minutes for them, so it's, it's a pretty easy checklist, too, if you, to go through and figure, you know what I mean, I'm not trying to uh, borrow trouble here, but most of this board has been together for, for quite a while, so. All right, with that, um, any comments on the May tenth, twenty-twenty-two meeting? Mary Lou, you can't vote on this one.
You can vote as you want. Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the May tenth, twenty-twenty-two Board of Selectmen meetings.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great, all right, moving to March fourth, twenty-twenty-four.
I make a motion to accept the March fourth, twenty-twenty-four minutes as written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great, um, and then, uh, March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four? Again, Mary Lou, you can't, oh, this one. Yeah, she was about right. Um, I'll make a motion to approve the March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four minutes.
Second.
All those in favor? Great. All right, April sixteen, twenty-twenty-four? Any edits?
Um, yes. On page one, public service announcements, the second one up said Chair Goodwin congratulated select person Blanchard and Clerk Dowling on their reelection. It was actually Kabinsky.
Wait.
It's not me.
Yeah, it wouldn't have been you.
It, it's.
Yeah.
Wouldn't, you wouldn't have been on it either.
No.
Well, yeah, but.
Chase is with Jamie, so.
I think that, I think somebody, and why would I congratulate? Congratulate you, it doesn't make any sense.
Um.
Clerk Dowling for running a marathon.
You and Mary Lou.
And they congratulated you for running a marathon, not for winning an election.
It said Clerk Dowling on their reelection, it says.
Yeah.
So it's not me, I'm not with Mary. Um, but I think you're with Mary, right?
I'm with Mary.
So it's select person Blanchard and select person Volby.
No, that would have been twenty-twenty-four.
That is twenty-twenty-four. No, we'll go back and listen, we'll, we'll, we'll go back and listen.
Yeah, that's not right.
Yeah, we'll go back and listen.
Cause it was Chase and I that were, in April twenty-four, were the ones who were.
Right, so you congratulated yourself.
I might have done it as a joke, that is probably, that probably.
One of us probably congrat, congratulated.
Oh, listen.
I'm absent, forget it.
We'll listen to it, we'll listen to it.
I'll sort of pin on that one, cause I don't.
Yeah, we'll listen to it.
It was probably Mary that congratulated you and.
Because she, you were the chair, she could have been Chair Blanchard.
I don't, I don't.
Not in twenty-four.
I don't know, no. All right, let's just put a pin in that one, moving on, um, January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
And I, I do wanna thank Frances, cause she has stepped in and started working on these right away, so you're getting them.
Oh, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Any edits?
You can't do this one, because, oh, the three of you can, I'm sorry, never mind.
Yep. Um, do we have a motion?
I have, I just question the, um, the language in the citizens forum. It just seems to me that there's some things that don't make sense. Or naturally speaking. Read it, Mary. Um, which one is that, Mary Lou, I'm sorry? There's citizens forum.
Six, at the bottom, Rebecca Tendrow, South Road.
So it's sound, it looks there like, um, she just transcribed it exactly how it was said.
Okay.
Because if you see where it says, I think it's important that if you stay current with, uh, that is directly transcribed.
Okay.
From the, so we can't correct somebody's grammar if we're transcribing directly.
Oh, okay, no worries.
It is very hard to.
Can't change what.
It's very delicate, yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, I mean, they're sentence fragments.
Well, and that, so that's the question.
It's a back and forth.
Right, and do you want it?
It wasn't this clean.
When you're doing citizens forum, do you want a transcription of exactly what the person said, or do you want a synopsis? And we can just let Frances know what you want.
Oh, I don't think you want a word-for-word like that.
No, synopsis would be much better.
Almost never want a word-for-word, unless there's some.
I think, and, and I don't know, because it was citizens forum, she may have felt that.
Yeah, no, no, that's only understandable, I don't think that there, there should be more detail when there's something of importance, and if you have a question about that, just ask, um, but the, but yeah, it should never be, it's not a transcription, it's a synthesis.
Okay.
Okay.